Following the order, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I agree we approved the agenda.
Second. Remove the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda. Second. And move the second, it's unanimous choice. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion passes. Do you have anybody here to speak to something that's not on the agenda? New business, new police officer.
I won't take up much of your time, but I did want to take just a minute to introduce our newest hire from the police department, a new police officer. This is Ace Blutrum. He comes to us from Panama City, Florida. He is just coming out of active duty with the United States Air Force in the Security Force Division. And he will start the academy next month and then he will graduate just after the first of the year. And then he'll be on field training with us. But I wanted to introduce him. He has relocated his wife and children to this area and wanted to get started in one portion once he got out of the military. So very lucky to have him. I can tell you his background came out extremely well. One of the comments from one of the polygraphers that does our background investigation is that he's a rail line. So we've been able to determine that already since he's been here. The chemistry that he has with our current team is fabulous and we're just very, very lucky to have him. But I wanted again to come and meet you guys in person and we'll have an official swearing in and a painting of his bat when he gets back from the academy. Thank you guys for your time.
Welcome. Good luck at the center.
Good luck at the academy.
Next item is approach with new motor controls for the water pumping station.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members for your consideration this evening and included in your council papers. There's two bids I obtained from Coal Creek Electric to replace the motor control. Motor controls at our water pumping station. We've been talking about this as a CIP project pretty much since I came over to work as director three years ago. Events that happened on March twenty-seventh escalated this to the top of the stack. So if you recall, the evening of March twenty-seventh, that would involve one of the transformers, a water pumping station. Pump two was actually running at the time and continued to do so on a low voltage state trying to run on two-thirds power until it eventually burned itself up. The reason this happened was because the motor controls currently installed have no over and under voltage or frequency protection. And the breakers inside the motor control center are not sized appropriate. Current controllers, as I mentioned before, were purchased and used and installed sometime around two thousand and five in that building. Serial numbers on the current equipment indicate that they were produced between nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-eight. So this equipment's nearing twenty-five years old. They had a team of engineers come in and evaluate the system after the pump failure. They determined that the controllers were never set up properly or configured. All these things that led to failure of the pump, why it didn't happen before March twenty-seventh, I have no idea. It was just a perfect storm. Current Siemens controllers are of course obsolete. System components are no longer supporting. Since March twenty-seventh, Coal Creek Electric's been able to get the system back online and made some adjustments and soft starts, which has helped. The pump motors are starting better, however, we still are currently running the system with no protection. Should another event like that on March twenty-seventh happen again, likely that the outcome would be the same. New motor controllers prohibit this from happening again by tripping the unit should either motor see a higher voltage state. Bids came in very close, as you'll see, maybe just a few dollars apart. Siemens and Rockwell are both excellent pieces of equipment. A recommendation from Coal Creek is that we go with Rockwell this time and base solely on the fact that that's our service and support. It's much more readily available and easier to access than with the Siemens. Staff's recommending council approved a bid with Coal Creek Electric in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for purchase and install new Rockwell motor controls for both of our water pumps. This could be paid for out of some of the ARP by name of some others. This is a perfect project and qualifies and I think the timing always a part of it. With that, will answer any questions you might have on this.
Any questions? Anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda? Council discussion?
We discussed this in Public Works and Utilities Committee last week. And it's as straightforward as what Rob said, so the committee probably is a subject of. I mean, we approved the bid with Coal Creek Electric for the water pump controller parts in the amount. Fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second. Remove the second, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion passes. Next item is the Maple Leaf Trail construction.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Hoskinson, MCG Consultants. I'll be fairly brief here. I just want to give you a quick update where we're starting with the design, the first phase of the Maple Leaf Trail. We're nearing the end on that. Design was mostly wrapped up. There's a little button of items with KDOT on and we'll be, well, KDOT will be getting that out to bid for this winter for twenty-twenty-two construction season. So we're nearing the end. There are a couple of things that have cropped up with the easement acquisition process. That's you got the design, you got utilities and easements. So we've got the big three components. But we've pretty much got designs in care of. Utility locations are not necessary, so we're willing to get there. There is a need for some temporary easements through this location. And I included in your packet a memo and then there was two maps. And on this first map, I might go to that one. As we started going through this easement process and figuring out what kind of temporary easements we need alongside the railroad trail, just to help facilitate construction, treat, create, things like that. It was brought up and I think the council's kind of been informed that the easement, that the permanent easement the city has previously acquired appears to stop at Elm Street. So it goes, does not go all the way north to Highway fifty-six. Had some discussions with KDOT about that and they are advising to go ahead and just basically build the trail from High Street north to Elm Street, connecting and crossing what's built this past year. Keeping, keeping the funds into the federal fiscal year that they were intended, so we don't lose that money moving forward. And then in the future, if there's an opportunity, if you have the design from Elm Street to the highway, we could go either go after the old money or just shell it for some later day, whatever the council chooses in the future there. They were highly interested in keeping the project moving forward. I discussed that with Glenn. I think we're kind of all on the same page, at least for now, trying to at least get that first half of the project build started with the trail. And that is kind of the, we'll call it the hairiest area there with all the trees and the clear and whatnot. We're needing temporary easements on the east side of the railway to reconstruct some fans, do some minor grading, things of that nature. Glenn provided some appraisals. Well, he's only back up the second map, the third page of my items there, had a highlight of which easements would be acquired through years. We'd be looking at, oh, you see properties with the numbers and circles on would be looking at properties one, two, three, four, and five. Most of those are just temporary easements for construction and we'll expire afterwards. There's one small spot where there's some drainage that comes out that'll be utility for some storms to pipe. Appraisals that came in for that are tabulated on the first page. Five properties total for all five properties is one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars based on the appraisals. Appraiser's value of those easements. Because of the federal money that's involved here, the city has to go through the uniformed acquisitions and whatnot, have an appraisal. And then the initial offer has to be approved by the council. So that's kind of the main reason why I'm here tonight is city having questions about the project status, the need for the easements, and then ultimately we're looking for approval after this initial offer. You have any questions?
What was the original plan with the current grant, as far as this phase, was it hard to go over the highway?
It was, yeah.
Would there have been excess funds? So was it to go from High to the highway?
Yes.
So it's supposed to go all the way from High to the highway. So if we're not going all the way to the highway in this build, you know, do we lose those funds or do we need to use those to go south?
I think this instance of high actually do an end up with those funds. We'd say our magic.
No, right, right, right. So based on, because the description was High to the highway, there's no way to change that to anywhere south of High to use all this one, all the funds? Just trying to figure out what the options are.
Got you. I did not ask that question about KDOT. We haven't straight or designed any of that.
Yeah, if we, if we have a, right, if we have a length of trail that we were funded for and we're not going to do the top piece now, can we shift it all down to the same length?
I'd be very nice.
I can call them and get back to you. My speculation would be probably not because of how the grant was written.
Right, with descriptions of.
For that portion. And the other component to this was KDOT was concerned about setting back on the schedule and the Fed's not. Basically, KDOT would lose the federal money and wouldn't even have the money to give the essentially.
Right.
And so to go farther back, we didn't have to go through survey design. They do some environmental clearances on that, so it does push that schedule out. I'll certainly ask the question though.
Is that the way we can start from Almond Road down and by the time we got the rest of it, we did the rest of the backend that would.
KDOT process there cluttered all the designs that had done up front.
I'm just asking, if that's, if that's your reality, then let me look at that.
I'll ask, I will say this, the half between High Street and Elm Street is eating up the most cost of the crane. The portion from Elm to the highway is a little more clear and easy. There wasn't as much piping and whatnot.
Can I ask what that number is? About, how much money in federal rent sidewalks were losing?
I don't know. Well, technically, you're not losing anything yet because, I mean, depending on where bids come in. And we've seen bids creep up this year, bids coming high and you now have a cushion to help cover some of that. Glenn, do you remember the number off the top of your head? Was it seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar crane? Yeah, I think that was about. That was a total of federal money. Life for, so we're probably good two-thirds of that done. But that, yeah, the last portion was really. Because it was all the one piece, so I don't, you know, I don't have to be ever broke it out. I will ask a question about KDOT, we'll have KDOT to see if there's some leaning to try to maybe push one way or the other.
Now, I don't think that delays the action on doing that.
Oh, sure, yeah, the easement would be regardless, so it would be wise if you're in favor of it.
One thing we want, one thing to keep in mind here is that regardless, we're going to connect up with fifty-six regardless because the next phase was going from Elm Street to pump eleven to fifty-six. So that'll be the connector, even though we never go the original route, we are in the next phase after that. That's the next phase. Year before, so you're going to get there one way or the other. So you've already approved.
So you lost me. From High, from High Street to fifty-six, you have a street.
Right.
So now you go eleventh up Elm, connecting.
Right. You're going to ship over one street. That's what you have to do. And we've already got Elm Street out of the trail. And you're going to go north from there in the next phase where we got, there's about three different projects. And one was going to Elm Street connecting to fifty-six highway. And I think that's what KDOT will actually like this because it makes the whole project cheaper and easier to do. You're not near the railroad, you're just going up the street. They don't like that. So we'll get there, it's just a different route.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that's one last one there, it's not right. I mean, that's for, there's no bid in there.
Right.
Sorry about that. I just don't understand.
So we just need some motion to increase the appraised value for the.
The offers. Right, it's revenue actually did get that right. On my head, move to direct the city administrator, actually that in revenue.
Okay, I move to direct the city administrator and project engineer to offer compensation for one permanent and five temporary easements that are necessary to construct the Maple Leaf Trail. Second. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion passes. Next item is the first street special assessment.
Not really complicated, sorry. This looks really daunting. It's a five-part motion, but it's actually all part of a piece. Some of you were on the council when we did this. I mean, we're not back in the day. As you know, first street until recently was gravel road inside the city. Long story short is that the county, the township, the city, and the homeowners all came together and worked out a plan to hard service that road, which I think we did in the council years ago. Nobody was, okay, none of you, nobody, okay, that's that long ago. It's all right, so I just remember back in the day, yeah, so. So, but anyway, if you remember watching any of this, it took months to hammer out the deal. It made it complicated because, you know, that subdivision out there had been there for twenty years. They'd never built a hard service road. The only reason we were able to make it possible is that the county came in and partnered with us and the township has members in it too. So they, they threw in all their resources. It's a four-way partnership we've worked out. The counties were in the engineering for free and they, they were really good through us throughout the entire process. They supervised the city, they bid it out, they did everything and worked with us on many, many issues. We finally got the road built, so now we have a hard service road. Well, the homeowner signed off on a petition back two years ago now, or well, it's been longer than that, right, three years ago, that special assessed their portion of the road. Because then nobody wanted to pay for that whole upfront. Well, Kevin McCallum is our bond counsel, called me a couple weeks ago and said, look, we have, before the end of the year is up, before you guys pass your budget, you always, because you're setting your mill levy and your property taxes for the next year. We've got to get this in front of you. So what you're going to do is you're going to set up the hearing for September seventh, the special assess. It looks like a long drawn-out process, as it is. This has to do with special assessments from the county and sort of state requires that you do when you do a special assessment. Yeah, you're just seeing the tail end of this, believe me. The other part with all the bond counsel, all of all those documents, it's a mile high, I think. So basically, they have to do these five things. So when you make the motion, you really have to read off those five things. What this does is set in motion a hearing for September seventh, so when we pass our budget, this is going to be part of that. And people then will be special assessed on their property taxes on those properties that are adjacent to that course of the project. So this looks like really long and complicated in the way it is, but it's really just a special assessment on the property numbers, which they did agree to. Now, then they come to the hearing when they see this on the agenda and go, hey, what is this? But they have not been special assessed because the property tax is always a year behind. So, so this will be the first year we actually do a special assessment and the next year will show up on the property tax. So we're beginning to recover somewhat that money that they promised. I think it was fifteen years, ten or fifteen, I think it was, term of special assessment. So this is unusual because normally if someone's put in the subdivision to do special assessments, you'd be this upfront before. They build the subdivision, so you already special assessments, missed one a year's after the fact. But we got it done, but this is kind of the tail end of the building, so the financial part. So does that make sense if they confuse everybody, whatever? It's, it's a special assessment, it's important now.
So they committed twenty percent of the estimated?
Yes, and we stuck with that no matter what. So what we did was give them that number and say this would be an act that see, I think the project slightly went over it, but not by much. Say we're pretty close. The county was pretty good on what they did. So we just said we're going to stick to this number and would, it would not go up if the, if the project exceeded that number. And that's what we're saying.
Any questions?
So who wants to be brave and step forward on that motion?
Any heated discussion on this agenda?
So these five points could all be done in one motion?
Yeah, so you can do all those, all of those, that's where. I think the county or bond counsel said that and you can see all those documents that are back there. If you really want to read some of those things again, then probably should at some point. But yeah, you could, you could do all five as one motion.
Anybody?
Yes, I'll take a stab at it. Number one, do I need to list the documents?
No.
So I knew we approved each of said documents, established September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P M. To meet the purpose of hearing, any and all written or oral objections to respective assessments set forth therein. Call the city clerk to publish the notice of public hearing and the official city newspaper not less than two days prior to such public meeting date. Now, the warrant notice appearing and statement of cause proposed to be assessed. Each and all owners of property infected by such assessments at their last known post office address at the same date. That's application and notice of public hearing and file each of said documents a record in the office of the city clerk and make the same available for public inspection.
So. So remove the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion passes. Next, council committee report, budget plan, Scott.
Yeah, we met once since the last meeting and had three agenda items. One was just further conversation, discussion around budget impact of the NRP and RID proposals. And determined it most likely is not going to be a negative impact on the budget. However, will be dependent somewhat on the developer agreements that we ended up signing for the RID. Depending on percentages of any property tax that are directed that way. So we'll continue to look at that and take into consideration the developer agreements that come to the council for approval. Second thing, we had further discussion around the library mill levy, lid removal or mill increase. Again, they presented rationale, we've heard it had a change that if you've got, you know, they're more, more strongly behind the fact that they need that. They're going to go mill levy neutral in two thousand and twenty-two, meaning, you know, they'll get an assessed value increase, which is what they've been doing for the past ten years. But they do believe that they need the authority to cede more mills in the future and ask the council to at least raise to five or ideally remove the mill levy or rescind the ordinance that passed it. So I think we discussed, you know, it's a two thousand and twenty-three budget impacting thing. So as a council, we need to consider it one way or the other. I think probably before, I mean, February, fall of the season next year, so they can be a part of that like the city staff is and, you know, just treat their requirements around, you know, increased funding requests as, as we do as a council and see how it maps in to the final budget. But so I think the plan is to get that on the council agenda sometime early next year. Make a decision and then make a plan for the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Questions on that? Then the last thing we discussed was the power building, community center funding proposal. In case, I know you had some data you shared, I don't know what you.
Yeah, so last few months, I've been talking to business owners and people in the community. Had so far, I don't know, I don't know how many businesses, three or four businesses that bought in a few individuals. All of them, we're getting about two hundred and five thousand dollars for the project. So my intent is to try to, try to get that to at least three hundred thousand because it will pay it out with our sales tax credits. If we sell from the project, that gives about a half million dollars for the project. If we fund it out about five years, then we have some bond drop off in those funds to bridge the bill with no new taxes. So affecting the projects or projects that need money for that. I did talk to the rec commission, not the commission, I talked to the rec director. He's going to bring it to his board for the askings. Again, it'll be going to manager, kind of give us a form of, yes or no, so we know which direction we need to go. Providing what the plan on that. I think they're going to have them on the agenda this, this month. I have a few more to ask. I'm very confident that it will probably be at three hundred thousand dollars by the next two or three years. We will take that up whenever I can get that all certified. Maybe talking about finance.
You good, Scott?
Yeah, next meeting Friday at seven forty-five.
New development.
We've not met since the last meeting, however, we did have the Rick meeting on this bit. Here's the, all kind of came back with a little feedback from our respective bodies. And the next step there is that they can move forward with the housing assessment, get that approved by the Department of Commerce. Next time we meet, the CDC will be on the twenty-third and fourth.
In all cases, we have not met since the last meeting. We do already have power building items for next month though, so next meeting is the fourth.
In all of our staff reports that we had, we did discuss the pump station. We also talked about the water district five of Allen County. It was, students are showing interest again under that kind of fellow partnership that goes and requesting maps from there on. We also talked about partnering with Douglas County on the intersection of Sixth and High. They are willing to contribute to that project. They are willing to contribute to that project. We don't know quite yet what that will be or what the cost of the project will be if they are interested in partnering financially on that. Um, we talked about a memorial for Bill Weineger, a former public works director. Keep talking about that. I think the other major thing that I noticed was we talked about our cost agreement with G R D A. Uh, the freeze, we might as well call it, the event last year is going to, our share of it's going to be two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. It doesn't matter if you use that, it's the contract, that's what you agreed to. Um, we're talking about a payback terms of fifty-two months, um, where you can pay it all upfront, but we're still working through that. So we'll see what can we put together.
What is the Sixth and Hyde project?
The intersection here, um, so.
You know, paving it or something.
Okay, so do you, okay, I didn't know, is it the fire project or that you had to do something there?
Yeah, so we've, sorry, Brian, but I, I actually talked to a farmer just this, this week that has a farm south of town. And he actually complained to me about that intersection because they go over there and there's so many pumps and it's hurting their produce. Um, so it was discussed and a couple priorities that, uh, you know, the, uh, have you seen that square there, what, you know, what do you want to do? So I think it's, it really works through that, kind of that's the intent.
Right.
It's kind of trying to figure out something more solid right there, so it's, uh.
And given that Sixth Street is typically the county, so, right, part of why they're interested in.
Alright, that's what you do. Go to the court on that. City minister, staff comments?
Uh, just a couple things. Uh, any questions on events, financial, monthly financial report? I get all there, as usual there in this file. If not, um, even though I'm sitting here, I did get an update on our salary event that, um, studied from Austin Peters. It's moving along. They're beginning to get the final stages of it. Going to do some editing over here, uh, next week or so. And she might be, well, let's get that done here real quick and I thought of work on that. So, you know, that's moving along a lot. And we got a lot of, a lot of responses on that. A lot of cities that really contribute to that, it's great. Um, and then the city attorney, America, has worked on the mobile home ordinance, which we have not forgotten about. They're still together and some final plans to look forward on that. Can you get a word to them? So, I look forward to it.
And the comments?
Just have two things. Um, I would like to thank our city staff and the Baldwin Preparation Commission and the Baldwin Golf Association for the concert. On Saturday night, I think most everybody in town was there, it seemed like. That was the type of crowd that Sullivan Square is designed to handle. Wondered if it could and it did. So it was a wonderful night. Looking forward to seeing more events like that. Um, also there is a mural unveiling at six-thirty on Friday, the Baker mural. If you're driven by the public works, that, that's pretty cool. They have it up and ready to go. A great partnership with their, their maintenance department and their marketing department and their student life department. We're all a part of that, along with many other people that we know. Um, so that's at six-thirty on Friday.
Only comment I have is we're not going to have a work session this month, just with school starting. You know, right around later day and all that stuff going on right now. Alright, no one's a session needed, so I'll entertain a motion dinner. Motion to adjourn. You can move to second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose name?